Good evening and welcome to the Monday, March 22, 2021, meeting of the Ashland zoning board of appeals. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast by WACA. The town of Ashland, in response to the COVID-19 coronavirus, is currently following the guidance from the Ashland Board of Health, Massachusetts Department of Public Health, and the CDC regarding the virus and steps communities can take to prevent the spread. In accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 30A, section 20, all public meetings are being conducted remotely. To participate remotely from a computer, please use the link provided on the town of Ashland's website, or you may do so from a telephone by calling the telephone number, which you could also find on the website. First order of business will be to call the meeting to order and take a roll call. I, John Trefeatherin, am here.
Hi, Brian Forrestall, I'm here.
Hi, Nathan Bandam here.
Hi, Stuart Segal, I'm here.
Very good. We have two man, two hearings scheduled for this evening. One at 7:00 concerning 135 High Street and another public hearing scheduled for 7:30 PM concerning, concerning Zero Memorial Drive. I will just say to anyone who is here for the Zero, Zero Memorial Drive matter, the applicant has requested a continuance to our next meeting. We cannot address that request for a continuance until 7:30, the stated meeting time in our agenda. But I fully expect that that request will be granted, so that if you are here solely for the Zero Memorial Drive comprehensive permit hearing, that will not be taking place this evening, apart from our dealing with the request for a continuance. Going back to our matter scheduled for 7:00 PM, a continued public hearing at 135 High Street, a special permit request. This hearing was opened on February 22, I'm sorry, it was opened on March 8, and evidence was taken and it was continued until tonight. I will reread the meeting notice. The Ashland zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing via Zoom video conference to hear the petition of Philip Zekos, excuse me, of Ashland, Massachusetts, requesting an accessory family dwelling unit special permit per chapter 48, section 6 of the Massachusetts zoning act, and chapter 282, section 7.6, accessory family dwelling unit, and 9.3, special permits of the Ashland bylaws to allow for the construction of an accessory family dwelling unit. The property in question is located at 135 High Street, assessors map 18 lot 054, in the residential A zoning district. The parties wishing to be heard on this matter should appear at the time and place indicated above. Materials may be reviewed at town hall by appointment during normal business hours or on the town website. And as I stated, the hearing was opened on March 8, and we heard from the applicant and the applicant's representative. We opened the meeting for public comment, of which there was none, and we then proceeded to discuss the matter and request that our assistant town planner, Ms. Nellings, draft a decision for us to consider this evening, which would grant the special permit request for an accessory dwelling unit. And she has done that. Discussion concerning the proposed draft decision, any questions, concerns, comments about it? Brian?
I'm good with it.
Okay, Nathan?
Team's in line with what we discussed. I'm good with it.
Okay, and Stu?
I sent Emma a comment, and I, I think she's incorporated my comment in what will be the final decision.
John, if you'd like, I can share my screen and walk everyone through both Stu's comment and your comments.
Okay, let me just say, I did, I did send Emma some comments and suggestions, three different ones. So why don't, the easiest way probably would be for Emma to share her screen and review those proposed changes from Stu and from me.
Excellent. So as we go through, the parts highlighted in green are the parts that were changed based on comments received. The parts highlighted in yellow will be the items that are concluded tonight. So Stu's suggestion was that we make a note of the applicant's willingness to include any appropriate accessibility features. And so I added that as a finding. The board noted the applicant's willingness to make any appropriate future handicap accessibility accommodations that might be necessary. John noted in the findings for the special permit criteria that it mistakenly included a reference to public sewer. But since they are on private septic, I changed number letter J3 to be adequate. Public utilities, including public water, are available at the locus. The locus is served by a private septic system. John also noted that the plan does not include a basement, so I struck the basement condition. And then finally, I edited the signature page to reflect or an anticipated vote to allow John to sign on behalf of the board. So.
Okay, thank you, Emma. Brian, Nathan, Stu, any, any questions, comments, concerns about the proposed changes?
I had a quick one. Weren't we supposed to put in there that, was it the, assuming the Board of Health gives approval to the new septic system?
Yes, I can read that condition if you'd like.
If it's there, it's cool.
Okay, I just, I, I based it on the fact that no building permit will be issued until the planning department receives that Board of Health approval of the, of the new septic system.
Nice. Okay, great.
Anything else?
Not for me.
Okay, then, I think that the matter is the, ready for a, for a vote. I, John Trefeatherin, approve the, the hearing decision as reviewed by Ms. Snelling this evening.
I, Forrestall, approve the application for special permit as reviewed by Emma.
Nathan Band approved the application as reviewed by Emma.
Okay. And I think we also need to take a vote because the access to town hall is, is limited. What we've been doing during the COVID period is to vote to authorize me to sign the decision on behalf of the entire board. In that way, eliminate everybody having to come into, to town hall. Is that all right with everybody? If so, we can make a motion to authorize me to sign the hearing decision on behalf of the entire board.
I make a motion that we authorize John Trefeatherin to act as the sole signing member of the ZBA until the after.
I second.
All in favor? I, John Trefeatherin, in favor.
I, Brian Forrestall, in favor.
I, Nathan Band, in favor.
Okay. Emma, I believe that takes care of.
I do think you need to vote to close the special, the public hearing.
Okay, is there a vote to close the public hearing?
I make a motion we vote to close the public hearing.
And is there a second?
A second.
All in favor? I, John Trefeatherin, in favor.
I, Brian Forrestall, in favor.
I, Nathan Bandam, in favor.
Okay. I will ask once again, Emma, is there anything else I need, we need to do?
I think we're all set.
Okay, thank you very much, and I see we have one person there here who was there for the hearing. Thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Our next item, unfortunately, is the not scheduled on the agenda till 7:30, and I believe we're not able to address that issue until 7:30.
Yeah, and my apologies on that, because I think at our last meeting, we did.
We had talked about moving it to scheduling it all at 7:00, so that if we find ourselves in this position, we can act expeditiously and not have to find out, find something to do for, you know, 17 minutes.
Well, Emma, do you play any instruments?
Well, you know, in this quarantine, I've been teaching myself to play trombone, so.
All right, break it out. You've got 17 minutes.
Well, concert, we are on TV here.
Yeah.
You know, first, I do think we have two sets of minutes, so.
Can we, the minutes aren't set for a particular time, so that's what I was going to ask, if we can review the minutes. I think we can.
Yes.
And if we can't, someone will, will let us know that we did something wrong and we'll have to do it again. However, let's, let's go to the minutes for February 22. These, the draft of this came out shortly before our March 9, March 8 hearing date, and we continued it to give everybody a fair opportunity to review the, to review the minutes. Anybody have any comments, questions, proposed changes? Brian, Nathan, Stu?
I don't have any changes.
Okay. The only thing I suggested is that at the, at the top with who was present, we should add the name of Lisa Mead, town council, because she was present during the, at least a portion of the meeting, if not the entire meeting, and I think she was there from the very, from the very beginning. So my thought it would be to add that below Emma's name under the also present category. Any other proposed changes? If not, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the February 22, 2021 meeting with the addition that I mentioned of adding town council's name to those that were present?
Make a motion, we accept the minutes with the modifications. The modification made it onto the, I guess, the Word document, but it's not in the PDF. Just want to make sure that.
Oh, okay, because I, I printed out the PDF, so I'm sorry about that.
I make a motion, we accept the minutes with the changes.
Okay, so I've heard a motion and a second, I think. I, John Trefeatherin, vote in favor.
I, Brian Forrestall, vote in favor.
I, Nathan Band, in favor.
Okay, so that's taken care of. And we go next to the minutes for March 8, which have someplace, here we go. Any proposed changes to those minutes? Brian, Nathan, Stu?
I have no changes.
No, nothing.
I have none. Okay, is there a motion to approve the minutes? Stu, would you like to make that motion?
Still moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. I, John Trefeatherin, vote in favor.
I, Brian Forrestall, vote in favor.
I, Nathan Band, in favor.
I, Stuart Segal, I'm in favor.
Okay, so those are approved. Well, Emma, that took care of two minutes, so we have 15 minutes remaining for your trombone solo.
Oh, wonderful, wonderful. Well, I'll take up a few more minutes if I can do an administrative update.
I, that would be delightful.
Excellent. I've got a whole, you know, two minutes of material here, so. I will say, so we do have, I am expecting a few applications to come in for special permits. They haven't arrived yet, but I know that probably in May, we will be seeing a few new public hearings. And then the Citizens Planners Training Collaborative, which is a group in Massachusetts that offers training on planning to boards and committees, has released some 2021 e-workshops. And I encourage everyone, I'll send out the link, but I encourage the board to look at those, and if anyone's interested in attending, please let me know. Because they, you know, they do a good workshop and they do trainings on various aspects of different, you know, issues and concerns of the ZBA, so that could be a good training opportunity.
Several years ago, I did attend one of those when it was done in person. It was held at Holy Cross on a Saturday, and I found it to be quite helpful, quite interesting, and made me realize that the town of Ashland supports the ZBA administratively much more than many communities support their ZBA's, so it was good to, to get that feedback. And anything else?
No, that's it.
Oh, well, I, I added 35 seconds to it with my comments, so. I am going to suggest that we recess and come back at 7:30. Is there a motion to go into recess?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
I, John Trefeatherin, in favor.
I, Brian Forrestall, in favor.
I, Nathan Band, in favor.
I, Stuart Segal, I'm in favor.
Okay, and, whacka, if you could enter us into recess, and we will return at 7:30 to deal with the public hearing on Zero Memorial Drive and the request for a continuance. Thank you. Good evening. Once again, we have returned from our recess. It is 7:30. And just for the record, all four members of the Zoning Board of Appeals are back. At 7:30, as I had previously stated, we had a scheduled public hearing for a comprehensive permit request involving Zero Memorial Drive. The hearing had been opened on February 22nd, was continued until March 8th. Thereafter was continued at the request of the applicant to this evening. On March 18th, a counsel for the applicant, Robert C. Buckley, faxed a letter to me at Town Hall, and I will read it into the record. Dear Mr. Chairman, on behalf of our client, U.A. Senior Manager LLC, we hereby request that this matter be continued without testimony from the Zoning Board of Appeals' agenda of Monday, March 22nd, 2021, to the next scheduled meeting of April 12th, 2021. Please do not hesitate to contact me should you have any questions. Very truly yours, Robert C. Buckley. Any discussion concerning the request for a continuance to March 22nd? I know we usually grant requests when the applicant is the requesting party. If not, then is there a motion to continue the hearing to Monday, March 22nd, 2021 at 7:00 PM?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Wouldn't it be, sorry, April 12th? 12th, thank you, Stu.
Yeah, what am I doing? Okay, April 12th. I was reading the wrong line. Thank you. So the motion is amended, would be to continue the matter to Monday, April 12th, 2021 at 7:00 PM.
So moved again.
I second the motion as amended.
And all those in favor, I, John Trefethan, vote in favor.
I, Brian Forrestall, vote in favor.
I, Nathan Band, in favor.
I, Stuart Segal, I'm in favor.
Very good, then the matter is continued. And Emma, having done our administrative matters and staff updates, is there anything else that we need to address this evening?
No, I do not believe so.
Okay, then is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I move that we adjourn.
Is there a second?
I second.
And I, John Trefethan, vote in favor.
I, Brian Forrestall, vote in favor.
I, Nathan Band, in favor.
I, Stuart Segal, I'm in favor.
Thank you very much, everybody. Have a good evening.
Thanks, good night.
Night.